Meetings law of the state of Missouri, the board must adopt by roll call vote. An agenda that includes the time, date, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Monday, June 10th at the administration building. I'm talking so fast, I'm out of breath. 8855 Dunn Road, Hazelwood, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were sent to major radio and television stations, to three newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda? It's been moved and seconded. Could I have a, any discussion? Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Gray.
Aye.
Secretary Blutze. Ms. Ponder.
Aye.
Dr. Powell.
Aye.
Mr. Chabot.
Aye.
Madam President.
Aye. At this time, Doctor, would you please come forward, Deanna, and introduce us to... Teacher of the Year.
All right. Good evening. So tonight, I get to recognize and honor our Teacher of the Year. The Ferguson-Florescent School District is pleased to recognize McClure South Berkeley Instructional Support Leader, Ms. Tiffany Buchanan, as our District Teacher of the Year. Ms. Buchanan, who has been with the district for the past nine years as a teacher and instructional coach leader, shared the following. "The rewards I find in teaching come with the students' understanding that what they once thought was a difficult task became manageable because they began to believe in themselves, where they otherwise lacked the confidence to do so. She believes that she has been blessed by those who taught her, and she is committed to doing the same for others. Congratulations, Ms. Tiffany Buchanan, and thank you for all that you do for the students. And I must say that seeing her in action with not only students, but the staff, she's incredible and she's touching teachers and students' lives daily. So thank you very much."
(Coughing)
I tell you, we're all crazy.
Okay.
Students, teachers, and staff all across the Ferguson-Florescent School District are experiencing success. On Friday, May 16th, the McClure North Stars baseball team plays as the state champions against Hazelwood Central during the Class V, District V championship with a 10-9 score. This is McClure North's second time winning the district championship since 2005. Congratulations to all of the athletes who have worked hard and played even harder. McClure North's recent graduates Marie Foster, Dominic Buffer, Julian Hayes, and Jordan Laxton have earned the Seal of Bilinguality. The Seal of Bilinguality is awarded to graduating high school students in districts with a DESI-approved program who have demonstrated achievement in English, a language other than English, and demonstrated socio-cultural competence. Our students were eligible based on their scores on the following exams: the end-of-course exam and the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages Assessment. Incoming seniors Kanila Webb and Malik Fabian Mohammed will graduate with the seal in the 2019-2020 school year. Congratulations to the staff at Halls Ferry Elementary. They have been recognized by the Missouri Schoolwide Positive Behavior Support for their implementation of the Positive Behavior Support Practice. The Missouri Schoolwide Positive Behavior Support is an evidence-based proactive approach to teaching and reinforcing positive behavior in students, thereby improving student behavior, creating safe schools, and maximizing instructional time and student engagement. Librarian Heaven John and 5th Grade Teacher Renetta Batiste from Airport Elementary took both Airport 5th Grade classes to the Apple Store to culminate a coding unit they started learning in library class. They began their coding unit working with JavaScript, a very popular coding language, and many of the 5th Grade students were excited to do a lesson on Swift, which is Apple's coding language, at the Apple Store. Computer science is the way of the future, and many of the jobs Airport students will hold have not even been created yet. Most of these jobs involve technology, so it is important our students are prepared for an ever-changing world. You can learn more about these stories and other examples of the great learning happening in our district on our website and on social media.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of June. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the recently completed session of the Missouri General Assembly. It was a session notable for what did not pass as much as for what did pass. Among the issues that did not pass were charter school expansion and a voucher program called empowerment scholarship accounts. MSBA's Associate Executive Director for Advocacy Mike Reed says overall, "It was a good session for education."
The good part about it is there was no expansion of charter schools or ESAs and vouchers. And for that, I appreciate all of the hard work that our members did. It would not have been done had they not put a lot of pressure on their elected officials and let them know that their activities matter to people at home. So I give all the credit to the people, our members, for that. So it was overall a good session.
Among the bills that did pass this year was an omnibus education bill containing provisions from a number of other bills, including a provision that prohibits school districts from starting school earlier than 14 days before Labor Day, something MSBA strongly opposed. However, that restriction will not impact the upcoming school year calendar because the bill states the change will begin in the 2020-21 school year. In 2020, the school year cannot start earlier than August 24th. The State Board of Education has been discussing what makes a great school and how to measure school progress. You'll have the opportunity to comment on the new proposed accountability standards under consideration by the State Board beginning August 1st. The standards are part of what's called the Missouri School Improvement Program, or MCIP. The State Board of Education has used MCIP for its accreditation decisions since 1990. The primary change to the sixth version of MCIP would be the addition of leading indicators of performance, such as the investment in and quality of school leaders and teachers, the culture and climate, and database decision-making and instruction. You can find the proposed MCIP six standards on the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's website. The Governor's School Safety Task Force has completed a series of public hearings throughout the state as it works toward completing a statewide strategic plan for school safety. One of those public hearings was held in Kurtsville, where Police Chief Jim Hughes urged task force members not to develop one-size-fits-all recommendations. He also warned against making schools into fortresses.
I think that what that does is it makes the cure more painful than the disease itself. Schools need to be a safe environment. Children need to be able to feel safe. They need to be able to be children. And I think draconian kind of measures impact that, and I want to make sure we don't lose that because we're focusing on security and sometimes we might lose that perspective.
At another public hearing in Kansas City, the Supervisor of Safety and Environmental Services for the Lee Summit School District, Ryan Hall, echoed the comments of many of those who testified by telling task force members about the need for more mental health resources in schools.
I would like to commend the state of Missouri on its strides to create and implement mental health programs. However, these should just be seen as the first steps. I strongly recommend this task force examine areas of improvement in funding and resources available as too many students and young adults do not get the help they need. This can not only jeopardize their safety, but the safety of others.
MSBA Executive Director Melissa Randall and Senior Policy Advisor for MSBA Center for Education Safety, Paul Finnewald, are members of the School Safety Task Force. The group is to issue its report by July 31st. By the way, the annual Safe Schools and Colleges Conference sponsored by MSBA Center for Education Safety is scheduled for July 8th through 10th in Springfield. That conference will feature presentations on a wide variety of school safety issues and is designed for school board members, school district staff, local law enforcement officials, and others who deal with school safety issues. Registration for that event is on the MSBA website. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
Thank you. At this time, the board allocates, I'm sorry, this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders the opportunity to commit, to comment, I'm really out of it tonight, it's just wild, on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each board meeting. Prior to the public comment period, participants are asked to fill out a comment card with their name, address, phone number, email address, and topic to be addressed, and will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Members of the audience who would like to contribute to the program, please, if you'd like to. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board are requested to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and in keeping with district policies, 40-54, 40-59, and Personnel Law should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the board will not directly respond to speakers during the public comments section, the board president may make clarifying remarks at the end of the comments session to correct any misstatement of facts. At this time, Ms. Judy Ferguson Shaw would like to speak to us about MSB High School.
Good evening, all. As stated, my name is Judy Ferguson Shaw, former academic scholarship coordinator at McClure South Berkeley High School. And I come to you as I have for, I don't know, as long as you all have talked about closing MSB and you've done so. My heart pains that that school has been closed to the children that it was built for, by their taxpayers. So I am acutely aware of the fact that you had told us that you were going to field the building, and I'm understanding that only half the building will be used this year. So again, I'm asking, I know it's late, but I'm asking once again that you allow the kids, the 10th, 11th, and 12th graders who are rising, to remain in the building to finish up their high school years. It would eliminate a lot of frustration that the staff is bound to have to deal with as the year moves on. And it would also prove to the community, the children and the parents, that you care about their kids who are being transferred to a school where their rivals live. And understanding that there will be much frustration, again, with the children blending. It would also satisfy that peace and allow for just the middle school students who are rising freshmen to go to their new school, and it would be a whole lot less frustration for those children. So I thank you all for this time and know that I am still pained, a lot of parents are still pained, and of course, the children are pained about the fact that you have kicked them out of their school.
Good evening, everyone. The commencement ceremonies for all three high schools were a great success. Administration received positive reports from arena staff who were pleased with the preparation and implementation of the new procedures this year. Our graduates and families represented the district and the community well. Our Equity Committee is continuing to meet. The committee met last night for a work session with Sarah Reese of Educational Equity Consultants. The EEC has worked with district administration over the past year and has facilitated conversations on numerous topics related to equity and bias. We will continue to work with EEC during the coming school year. And we are still looking for members, and we meet the third Tuesday of every month at 5:30 in the administration building for anyone who is still interested. The Back-to-School Fair and Parade Planning Team has had several meetings, and we are looking forward to another exciting kickoff this school year. This year's parade and fair will be August 10th, with the parade starting at 9:00 a.m. at Mark Twain and ending at the Old Administration Building, where the fair will run from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. All of our schools will be participating. This has become a great tradition for families and school staff to connect or reconnect. We hope everyone will come out and enjoy the festivities. Our schools are planning events to build community in the coming weeks and months. Parents, please complete the online verification so your child is ready to start the school year, including current accurate contact information, which will help us keep you all informed. Also, we want to encourage everyone to get the free district app, so you will receive timely information from your schools. These are just some of the ways that the Ferguson-Florissant School District is connecting with our stakeholders. And my portion was community engagement. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am the decorum representative for the district. Don't have a specific report for you today, but one of the things I do want to say is that the board is truly committed to school safety. We've talked a lot about it. We're trying to put things in place to provide those supports for our students. One of the things that I'd like to suggest to the board is, and my concern is, is that we add more counselors. That we add more counselors or social workers to our team. We're finding we're having many families and students with traumatic experiences that we, teachers in classrooms are not having, don't have the time to truly commit to that as much as they would like to. So I would just like to make, just request that we put that as a topic of discussion for our board, Madam President, if we could do that. I would also like to suggest that we send representatives to the Spring Conference on School Safety through the Missouri School Board Association. It's very interesting that that was their, one of their big discussions today. We just need to have more counselors and social workers. Also, one of the things that was said too is that we don't want an atmosphere of policing in our schools. Our schools are supposed to be safe environments, but we don't want them to look like prisons, and we don't want students coming to school feeling like they are being policed. We want to have a loving, nurturing environment for our students that is a safe place for them to come. We don't want students feeling unsafe when they're in school or feeling bullied or anything like that. So I just wanted to make sure that the community knows that that is a commitment from the district to make sure that we have our safe schools, that we're looking at those behaviors that really need help. But as we were reminded, or have been reminded, we need to make sure that we're looking at the students who are affected by the behavior of those students who are doing those things that are not safe or that's blocking other students from learning. So again, I just wanted to make a commit, us to reiterate the commitment and then to look at some of the other things that we can possibly do to help our students, especially with this transferring and this restructuring going on. So, thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Apparently, no score yet. We have it right up here. Just kidding. I'm on the infrastructure and processes. A big task, as we've been talking about for months, now we're actually in the big move of it all, is the restructuring of the school district. I know facilities and technology has been extremely busy doing that on top of all their normal activities. Technology, once again, is rocking it with the service request feedbacks, still at 98.6, so hats off to you. PD's continuing. You and your notes, Rich, you said the first ones. When's the next PD that's coming up for everybody? All right. Thank you. They're also going to be next year. We received a Walmart breakfast in the classroom grant that allowed us to purchase laptops. So when we provide breakfasts in the classroom, right now, everything is managed by paper, filing the forms, et cetera. So now, food service will have computers now to be able to record it and hopefully make things, should make things much more efficient. Onto the facilities. We have a lot of items in the consent agenda. Do you guys get copies of the agenda stuff? So there's a lot of stuff in there, as you can see. Playground fencing, since we're having a lot more little kids in the schools, we need to upgrade the playgrounds and putting fencing around that. Also, we have, are going to potentially agree tonight on the new SRO agreement with the city of Florissant, and that's coming at a cost of about $800,000. So please take a look at the agenda. It's packed full of good stuff. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Good evening. I'll talk with you about accreditation and student achievement. This week, standards-based grading training for our two pilot elementary schools, Central and Griffith, took place. These schools will pilot the new standards-based grading and reporting practices in the coming year. Last week, district leadership, along with school leaders and instructional coaches, attended the Summer Institute, where great learning took place around leadership, CI3T, and organizational health. This summer, professional development is taking place in all content areas and grade levels. All teachers and principals are invited to participate. And additionally, this week, members of the district CI3T core team and subcommittee members attended the PBIS Summer Institute to receive professional development to support the district's action plan in the areas of district-wide coaching, enhancing stakeholder engagement, Tier II and III interventions, and equity. That is all.
Thank you.
Good evening. I have the talent management portion, but I do not have an update for tonight, so.
I will give you a board update. We are having a retreat on the 21st and 22nd of this month. We have, we had a very strong committee with Courtney, Jessica, Sheila, myself, and Dr. Davis that was, has planned a very good retreat on Friday night. We're going to have equity training on Saturday morning. We're going to be talking about board concerns, things that they want to see done. And then on Saturday afternoon, I'm excited, we're meeting with the cabinet and our NEA president on how we're going to move forward as a team for next year. So it's going to be a powerful weekend, and we're going to come back to the district with many wonderful things. So I'm really excited about that. Anybody that's going to the Todd Shelton trivia night, be prepared because the board has a table, and we're going to beat all of you. So be ready. And then my last thing is kind of a brag and a thank you. A couple of weeks ago, I got a call from my daughter Erin, and she told me that she was named to the mayor of New York City's Exceptional Teachers and is going to his mansion and to a recognition dinner. And so today, or this afternoon, I get another call from her, which is really exciting. You know, New York City is much different than we are here. All of their boroughs and everything is one school district, so they have thousands of teachers. And they chose 47 teachers to be the Superintendent Teachers of the Year, and Erin is one of those 47. So I want to thank the teachers in the room that were her teachers and everybody that's in here that has influenced and helped her, because I think that's exciting. So I just had to brag, sorry. So now on with our show. Consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, Lori, after I was so excited about you. Okay.
Honestly, I had something else to speak to the board about this evening, but instead, what I'd like to do is just to thank everybody in the fact that there have been a lot of, lot of concerns, issues brought forward by members that central administration and the board have been able to work through to make things better for our membership. So I just wanted to take this minute and say I appreciate everybody for being solution-driven to help our folks. So, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. First, I want to just say thank you to everybody. Last board meeting, May 8th, my mom, I got a call from my mom. We're upstairs in closed session, and I got a call that she was unresponsive. She lives in North Carolina. So it certainly threw me in a tailspin, and I got the first plane, the flight I could get to North Carolina last week, last month. She was diagnosed with pneumonia. She's doing much better. I'm going to go back around the fourth and check on her, but I think the doctor's going to be fully releasing her. But she was in a bad place, and so I appreciate everybody's prayers and support during the time I had to go and be with her. I couldn't have been any good to you because I had to make sure my mom was fine, and she is doing much better. So thank you, everybody, for your support. But just wanted to give you an update so you knew where I was. Couple of other things, and I don't want to be out of your way. We had a dedication to Joy Rouse. Joy was our former early ed director, and we had a dedication and did a reading garden to her over at Little Creek, and that was an amazing event. She has been a champion and a warrior for reading in our community, and so we're excited about having that garden. And she had, came, come over, she had had a couple of, I think she had a knees replacement. She told us about that there, and she said, you know, I'm almost done because it's time for me to travel now. So we were able to celebrate her, and I was really excited about that. We've already mentioned Summer Institute. We had that. That went really well. Terry and his folks are working extremely hard on getting schools moved. That's our major priority over the summer, to get our teachers and all of our support staff in place at their new locations for August 15th, when is the first day of school. So we're excited about making that progress, and we'll keep you updated. There's a website, furgfloor/strong, and you can get an update on where those schools are as we get everybody moved and get the buildings cleaned so that we can get teachers access to those buildings as needed. July 29th and 30th, we're going to have our All Admin Meeting. We have it every year. So we have our Summer Institute, and that's mostly an instructional focus. That's almost immediately after school, right after Memorial Day every year. We have a couple of days here, and we partner over at Wash U and do some learning there, but that's typically a whole week or five days. And we've done that instructional piece, and then we'll do the operational side of it, All Administration Meeting. The Federal Reserve Bank, they've been great at supporting us. They've bought AP Economics books. They have some other programs in place for teachers and students that we do in partnership with them, so we're excited about that. And go Blues. Let's get to the game.
Now can I go to the consent agenda? Could I please have the disbursements?
Operational disbursements, $1 million.
So I am going to turn it over to Shantana, our Director of Early Ed, to talk to you about the curriculum adoption for early education.
Good evening. This is a request to purchase Creative Curriculum and the Aligned Assessment of Teaching Strategies Gold for all preschool classrooms. Creative Curriculum is research-based and approved by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It is also recommended by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for use within early childhood programs. Creative Curriculum is founded in best practice and improves students' academic and social-emotional learning by increasing critical thinking, problem-solving, language, and individual creativity in early learners. Research shows that engaging students in meaningful play and intentional thinking while in preschool increases overall learning and development in K through 2. In addition, the resource is aligned to making meaning and being a reader and will support students' transition from preschool into kindergarten. Also, Creative Curriculum and Teaching Strategies Gold is currently required and used in our Head Start classrooms. This request also includes the cost of professional development for the 2019-2020 school year to support the proposed purchase of Creative Curriculum and Teaching Strategies Gold Assessment. Strong professional development is needed in order to build overall teacher knowledge on how to properly implement the approved resource and assessment. The recommendation is to approve Creative Curriculum for early education, Teaching Strategies Gold, and Professional Development. If you have any questions, I can answer them at this time.
Should I have motion, please, first? opposed? opposed? motion carried. Thank you.
Good evening. Over the past year, I have worked with the ELA grade-level teams to create units of instruction to meet the new Missouri learning standards. We are building the new ELA curriculum, before the board for approval, or we are bringing, I'm sorry, the new ELA curriculum for the board for approval, to use as our district-wide 6-10 ELA curriculum. The purpose of the 6-10 ELA curriculum is to ensure that all students have an equal opportunity to learn reading and writing. The supports in the curriculum help to ensure that each student will have access to effective teacher and access to the same content, knowledge, and skills in each section or class. This curriculum will be used to teach reading and writing to all 6-10th grade students. This curriculum was written to support the board-approved and district-adopted curriculum resource of Pearson's My Perspectives. The recommendation is to improve the ELA curriculum for grades 6-10. And just to give you a little process of what we've done, last July, we received the resource, and we began training with teachers. In August, we met with department chairs, reviewed the resources. September through March, we've developed the curriculum, aligned with the standards, and started evaluating the teacher, getting teacher feedback on ILT days. In March through May, we continued that alignment, continued the evaluation and feedback, and it was brought to the Curriculum Advisory Committee as well as Cabinet, and it's just been ongoing collaboration with our pre-K-12 content-specific and grade-level teams. We have a secondary ELA curriculum site, and each grade level, 6-10, has the home doc, which breaks down the units by quarter. Within each, within each unit, there is a unit framework that provides the unit summary, the goals, the assessment, and the learning plan. We also have the unit framework of what a unit should look like, so it helps guide our administrators and our teachers for their look for us in the class. The standards are also aligned in those documents with each unit. And the Continued Professional Development Plan, I will begin working with ELA teachers next week, and we'll just continue with that content-related PD through ILT for the 1920 school year. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
So it's my pleasure, and I don't even know. This is Jen Kreisler, our Elementary Humanities Specialist. It's our last board meeting, so I give her to you to present on the intervention strategy.
Good evening, Board. This evening, I'm happy to bring to you a proposal for SIPs. In the past year, the board approved the purchase and implementation of Being a Reader. Being a Reader was the aligned curricular resource that we've used K-2 to really approach reading, reading instruction in a very systematic way. And so what we've really is over the past year with this implementation is that our three-five readers didn't receive the strong, aligned, systematic approach to reading instruction. And so SIPs is a wonderful intervention resource. SIPs is an acronym, and it stands for Systematic Instruction and Phonological Awareness, Phonics, and Sight Words. And so SIPs is aligned to Being a Reader, so that instruction is very much going to align with our K, what our K-2 readers are receiving right now. And so this proposal is that our three-through-five classroom teachers will receive their own set of SIPs, so that they can provide this intervention to all of those readers. And in addition to that, we will provide K-2 buildings with a set for a building that any readers that are falling through the cracks and need that additional wraparound support, they'll be able to get this instruction. And the recommendation is the board approves the Elementary ELA Intervention Resource and for SIPs, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about that.
All in favor? opposed? motion carried. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I have the next one, too. What I'm very excited tonight to bring to you is a proposal for classroom libraries. This proposal is for our grades 2-5 classrooms, and this is really what I want to think of as a seed to their classroom libraries. What we know is so important to our readers is we can provide great instruction, but they have to have access to rich, diverse, complex text at their fingertips, that they can read during independent reading time, that they can read during their free time. And with this proposal, this would provide each classroom teacher with the beginning of a classroom library. It's about 150 books per classroom. I have vetted each and every book for every grade level to ensure that they are a very diverse group of books. And what that means is that diversity to me means that students are going to see themselves in these books, and they're also going to see other cultures as well. And so this is very important to our readers. It's going to grow their language, it's going to grow their comprehension, they'll be interested in these books. And so this is the beginning of this process. The recommendation is that the board approves the process of these classroom libraries for $76,000 for grades 2-5. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the books that were chosen for this, these libraries. So what we did is, this is grades 2-5, and each library is exactly the same, so that each student has the access to the exact same books regardless of what teacher they're in. And so these libraries are going to live within each classroom. And so if I'm a fourth-grade teacher, I have my own classroom, and my kids have access to those books. And then the hope would be that throughout the years, we can continue to add on, so these libraries grow for students. Sure. That could be a point of consideration, yeah. Not a crazy comment. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yes. So on behalf of the CI3T Core Committee and Dr. Jameson, and as the co-chair of the Tier Two and Three, Two and Three of CI3T, I am going to present this. So over the past year, the district teams have worked on transitioning to a data-informed, multi-tiered system of support designated to address the academic, social-emotional, and behavioral domains with an overarching goal of supporting all learners in inclusive environments. As part of the primary prevention of social-emotional support, a district team comprised of both gen ed, special ed, administrators, school psychs, counselors, and instructional support leaders assessed what the district is currently using to address the social-emotional needs of our students, as well as evaluated other validated curriculum designed to target specific areas such as bullying, empathy, and managing emotions. The district's request is to purchase Second Step to be used with our pre-K5 students. Second Step is currently being used in some of our elementary buildings, and this will allow for district alignment pre-K through 5. The district also is requesting the purchase of Seven Mindsets to be used with our 6-12th grade students. Seven Mindsets provides a common language that helps lead to emotional management, situational awareness, and academic success. If both curricula are approved, the district will use the Train the Trainer model to onboard staff. Counselors, building representatives, building administrators, social workers, and safety officers will all be trained. Again, the professional development plan, there is, includes onsite training events such as Y, SCL, or Social Emotional Learning, Intro to the Curricula, personal application, modeling of lessons, and classroom observations. There's also parent nights included, and additional tools can be on-demand webinars. It is the recommendation that the board approve the social-emotional curriculum not to exceed $75,100. Any questions? Right, yes. So that is how, so it's built in to the day. Oh, and that was my implementation plan. There you go. So one of the things that we did look at is how it's, how it can be implemented and timed the required, right? Because I know that's one thing that we hear from teachers, is not any time. So with the pre-K5, it's five to seven minutes daily that they will be using, be teaching or applying the skills. Through K5, it's 30 to 40 minutes once a week, and there's these follow-up lessons, but they should be embedded throughout the week. So, for example, there was one on how to behave on a recess. And so it's, that's a little song, it's a little jingle that they can play as they're getting ready for recess. So it is incorporated throughout the day, not just staying in isolation. And then 6-12, it is a 20 to 30 minutes once a week, and the plan is to use that within the advisory model that we have built in throughout the schedule. So every day, students will have advisory, and part of that will be that social-emotional lessons, and that is the plan of when it would be taught in the secondary schools.
Fuse this with PBIS, and how do you add more time in the day and more stuff for the teachers? I'm really concerned about spending a lot of, spending this amount of money to put more programs in.
Absolutely, yeah.
And...
Yeah. So I'll, on behalf of Dr. Jameson, some of the things that we talked about was that very point, and so the, the schedule for high school allows the time without pulling it away from instruction. So they'll still have 84-minute class periods, and then there's a 25 to 30-minute advisory built in between the middle schools and the high schools. What we noticed at secondary schools is there is not a curriculum in place to directly teach the social-emotional learning components. Seven Mindsets allows that at secondary, and what we also noticed is that all schools don't have access to second steps. So doing this will build that access for all of our pre-K through 5 buildings. And so currently, we're not necessarily layering anything on, we're providing equitable access across the district in a K, in a pre-K12 format. So some of our schools have access and some of them don't. And so the purpose behind doing this is to provide teachers with the right level of professional development for implementation, and then we will hopefully see a decrease in our behavior data. Yes, ma'am.
And I've said that before. I'm concerned about the money, and I just want to know that if I walk in a building, how, how am I going to, am I going to see this? Is this going to be something that's going to be put on the shelf? Is this going to be something that teachers have been trained in again, and they're like, "Look, I don't have time for this." And I, and I know that, I'm, there's a rhetorical question, no, and maybe not, but I'm just really concerned, okay? And I want to trust you to do what you need to do, but please convince us as a board that the $75,000 is going to be used and is going to benefit the children, and is not going to pile onto the teachers.
Absolutely. And what I will say to that is, we will inspect what we expect. And so during our advisory times and doing walkthroughs at that time with administrators, and even in the elementary schedule, there is time set aside in the morning for social-emotional learning in their elementary schedules. And so asking our administrators to inspect what we expect and give us feedback is part of the implementation plan for next school year, so that we know exactly where we need to do additional supports for teachers. The CI3T Core Team has been very methodical and very thoughtful in their rollout plans and support needed for teachers. And so we'll still be doing our student screen year data, so we'll get it right at the beginning of the year. We'll start implementing curriculum, and we would hope to see those internal and externalizing behaviors decrease and watch our discipline decrease alongside. And if it doesn't, then we will need to make some adjustments to make sure that teachers are supported and that it's not another thing for them to do.
What, what process, or have you already thought about what your process is going to look like to review the data around whether or not this has been impactful? Is it going to be reviewed on a monthly basis, a quarterly basis, mid-year?
Sure. So each time the CI3T Core Team meets, I think they met monthly this past year, and they review that data every time they meet. And so they'll take a look, look at discipline data every time the Core Team meets, and they share that information back out with principals and district-level leadership.
And so when that data is shared with building principals, is the expectation then that building leaders do something different to maybe make the data look different the following month?
And so each building has CI3T representatives, and so they will work collaboratively with their building administrators to address those issues and try to, you know, make a point of correction, and if it's more PD for staff, or more intentional, or some coaching points around that, that they will make those adjustments accordingly.
Okay. And a final question, and, and my assumption, I'm thinking I already know the answer to this, but I just want to ask it. So for Second Step, is this a program that has been normed on a population that is similar to our students?
Yes.
Okay.
That was definitely one of the criteria. We looked at about seven different ones, and that was the big look for, for all of our, for all of the ones we were looking at.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to add quick, I'm sorry, go ahead, listen.
I was, I was just going to ask and say, we have so much starting new this year, and here's another new program added on. Is this something that really needed to start this year, or could we, would it be better if we waited another year just because of adding so many changes to the teachers and so, so much on to them as well as the students?
So I can respond to that some, you know, so we, we are doing a lot of changing, and this is another thing, teachers are going to deal with behaviors anyway, and what we're trying to do is equip them with the tools they need to be able to respond in ways that are supportive. Our pre-K through two schools all are changing, actually through six are changing, so that staffs are in new places. Our secondary schedules have changed, so we have block scheduling, so we have time built in for the implementation parts. So I think that's really key. And then the other part that Dr. Power Walker was asking about was the monitoring and how we respond to the data. Dr. Daddali, just today, in fact, when we had cabinet, he's created a site, and we will be looking specifically at data where they can look at from month to month as we progress, monitor what was, what were the numbers of referrals this time, and he has done it so that we can isolate it out by school, by grade level, and looking at it in different ways, so that these things that we're investing dollars in, that we can see and measure the return on the investment. If you have these things in place, what was the data in September? And now what's the data in October? And how do we retool each month after Core Team meeting? And also Gary Lee's, the Student Expectation Co. committee meeting as well, so we have those conversations during that time as well. It's not a perfect, you know, linear process, because, you know, data always has, it changes based on what you see, but there, but we put in the structures, I think, in place to, to improve.
I wanted to just, I guess, make a comment, and maybe you guys can help me figure out what I'm trying to say, or reassure me of what a concern I have. So I'm familiar with, with tiered models of intervention, and I know that when you build that bottom tier, it is supposed to be responsive to like 85% to 90% of the kids in your building. Your Tier Two is supposed to take care of maybe another 10% or 15%, and then your Tier Three is going to address the needs of your kids who have the greatest concerns. My experience has been that sometimes we are not as honest about our building data because we fear repercussion from central office. Does that make sense? And so therefore, we might call something that really was a fight, a push and shove, and then we don't get real data to build the bottom tier, and then we don't have adequate supports in place, and then we turn around and say, "This doesn't work." And so I just want to ask that that be something that be looked at, and that central office be sensitive to working with building leaders around allowing them to be totally honest about what their needs are around student behavior without making them feel like they're not adequate. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Right? So that's just the piece I want to put out there, because that's been my experience. People don't want to be honest about their data because they're fearful they're going to be told that they're not a good leader, and then, you know, have, have... they're gonna be told that they're not a good leader and then, you know, have, have some repercussions later on.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Tiffany?
I think the curriculum team's gonna come up here for just a second, just in case there's questions. You can, you can, you don't have to stand. You can sit down if you want. It doesn't matter.
While we're waiting, the score is 2-0. Blues is up.
Thank you, thanks for that.
So, good evening. This is my first time up at the podium this evening. So I also want to recognize the curriculum team is here and then Mr. Bob Antcox, one of our reps from Galileo and Imagine Learning is here with us today. So assessment data remains a critical component guiding the work and improving student achievement and, and teaching. Imagine Learning Galileo is a new assessment system that will allow a more balanced approach for teachers, students, parents and school leaders to support learning for students by providing feedback on how well students are performing on grade-level standards. This new system will allow us to assess math, ELA, science and government, along with providing access to ACT and SAT prep, and assessment banks for teachers to customize formative assessments that meet rigorous state standards. In addition to all of this, the new assessment, assessment system will provide students with exposure to 19 different question types, all resembling questions, types that they will encounter on the MAP assessment for both grade-level assessment and end-of-course exams. Along with the assessment system, we will have the ability to provide, sorry, math intervention for primary grades through high school, eliminating the need for additional purchases of other programs. We would like to provide you with a brief presentation about, to explain more about the newly proposed system. This slide just shows the alignment with Missouri learning standards. Based on Missouri schools currently using Galileo, it has a high correlation to MAP. The benchmark assessments within the system are tightly aligned to Missouri learning standards and the actual assessment is aligned to MAP question types for both the GLA and end-of-course exams. And there's another slide in here that will explain that. This slide demonstrates the built-in support for teachers, students and administrators in reference to communicating student learning outcomes and providing guidance on small groups. To note, red would represent a high-need group while blue would represent students achieving above grade level. Teachers can use this information for small groups, planning intervention with Imagine Math and lesson adaptation to ensure students are receiving high-quality grade-level instruction and support. Perhaps the greatest part of the reporting features is that we will have information on student performance on end-of-year targets, which will better inform our PLCs and instructional decisions at the classroom level, school leadership and district levels. These are the item types that I referenced earlier. Teachers will have access to high-quality assessment items for assessment development. There are nearly 200,000 questions available for teachers across core content areas, all aligned to the Missouri learning standards. The unique feature that comes with this assessment system is the ability to design assessments that behave like MAP, GLAs and EOCs because teachers have the option to create technology-enhanced questions using 19 different types that are listed on the screen. This will allow us to simulate testing throughout the school year on a, on teacher-developed assessments as well as district-developed assessments. Our PD plan is there. So in July, we will start with our lead assessment folks, administrators and ISLs. And then on August 6th, on a conference day, all teachers. And then throughout the school year, we will do check-ins and look at data through data teams and get feedback from our staff on how things are going. The one, in closing, I want to note a few things. It should be noted that the adoption of this, this system allows us to replace the Renaissance Learning Suite, which you often hear us talk about STAR and AR, Edoc Trina, several math intervention programs like Math Facts in a Flash, MobiMax, Accelerated Math and many others. In doing so, it does result in a cost savings for the district. I will also say that if we kept our current system, our teachers would have to be retooled again because it too is changing, not of our doing, but of the company's doing. So Renaissance Learning is also changing. So either way, they would receive new training on assessment. And so it is recommended that the board approve the purchase of the new assessment system at a cost not to exceed $298,000. At this time, the curriculum team or I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, I saw in the documentation that each student will receive their individual login. Would they be able to access this outside the school building?
Yes, they can log in and see their data outside the school building. The assessments, however, are locked.
So the assessments can only be done at the school? Because I was thinking like the ACT prep that...
Sure. So Bob, can we access ACT prep outside of school? Yeah. In the curriculum program, ACT and SAT prep can be accessed outside of school. But the actual assessments, the benchmark assessments are locked.
Okay.
And so we can prescribe a curriculum program inside of Imagine Math and on the curriculum side for students to do some math intervention that they have access to when they're not here, as well as ACT prep. So they will have, yeah.
Is it just the one training, summer training, and then?
So currently, the way, we have lead assessment folks in our buildings. And so we do train them and then they will train on test administration. So what we won't do is like shove all of this on them at one time. We will do it through the lead assessment folks in the building. So they are gonna get a training in August during our conference-style PD that's gonna be about 90 minutes to introduce them to the platform. And then as we go throughout the year, we'll collect feedback through their assessment folks in the building, their lead assessment managers in the building. And then we'll adjust their PD is ongoing. And it's not our intent to just throw this on them and then leave them to the wolves to fend for themselves. So our intent is to be, is to take that feedback. Us, along with the data strategist, will be working on training as well as working through the data team process with teams, which will give us some additional opportunities to train. And then also during ILT days, when we're reviewing data with them and going through standards, training and our curriculum alignment, we'll have another chance to do those in just small pocket trainings where we're able to get them logged into the system and take a look at a few pieces at a time.
Is this something that we're gonna have to purchase every year? Or is it one flat fee? Or how does that work?
Thanks for asking. So currently, we renew annually with our current assessment system. So this one is set up to do the same. It is discounted at over 45%. It is pretty close in alignment. But once we layer in all of the pieces of intervention that we are able to remove because of the Imagine Learning piece, we are at a cost savings. When we talk about the amount of money that buildings use on their building budgets or through federal title funds, we are actually under budget. Thank you. I have an amazing team. I cannot take credit for all of that. And I will say, I will also say that feedback that Dr. Davis has given the team as well as us collecting it from our CAC representatives, that they collected it from their staff, meeting with the principals, also hearing from the ISLs, that we've done training with them around assessment, has really impacted what we went out to look for. Dr. Davis gave us the charge to go find this thing. And so we were very intentional about the six vendors that we brought to the table to ensure that we were not, in fact, going to labor our staff. But we needed, we knew we needed good data back on our kids.
Okay. I just, I just have a quick question. And I always like to say I'm new, right? Because sometimes I add stuff that people are like, "Duh." So a lot of, lot of different programs, it sounds like, are being introduced into different buildings. And in some instance, some buildings, it looks like will have more than one thing going on. So I guess my wondering is what training will staff receive to help them understand how all of that stuff is supposed to fit together? Does that make sense? Yeah?
It certainly does. And one of the things that we will do is ensure that folks know that this is social emotional curriculum and this is what it means. And one of the desires that Benita and I have that we'll be working over the summer on because we realize that both of our departments have some pretty heavy PD things coming on is looking at what that training schedule will look like and looking at those implementation plans so that we do not overwhelm the system. You're welcome. You're welcome. Oh, yeah, just kidding. Biology. Nope.
That's okay. Thank you. Good evening.
And thank you for teaching, Eric.
Absolutely. My pleasure. Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Davis. After a successful pilot of biology textbooks at all three high schools during the spring semester, buildings voted and approved a science text resource from HMH called Inspire Biology. Funding has been secured to include the online and text resource along with professional learning for all the teachers of biology. HMH provides support, tight standard alignment and highly engaging activities for students enrolled in biology. Teachers were trained on this resource throughout the spring semester and will continue training during the summer and also during, as school resumes, during those ILT days as well. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve HMH Biology Text Resource for the Ferguson-Florescent School District Biology Course, not to exceed $111,506 from district funds.
Could I have a motion, please? It's been moved in second. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you so much. Now the restoration.
I'm back.
And reentry center.
All right. Good evening. The purpose of this presentation is to update you about the Restoration and Reentry Center at the Mark Twain Student Support Center for the upcoming year. What you will see tonight is a result of collaboration and design team and evaluation of student data, both academic and behavioral. The goal of the Ferguson-Florescent Restoration and Reentry Center is to provide students with a holistic approach to supporting their needs with the goal of graduating with a high school diploma equipped with the skills and dispositions necessary for post-secondary success. Here are some profiles for the students that could potentially be served through the Restoration Center. All of these programs are current and running at Mark Twain this past school year. Missouri Options allows students to earn a diploma. Typically, students accessing Missouri Options are in danger of dropping out. And so we give them an assessment that gives us information on what they need to study. They do have to have a specific number of credits already earned before we can allow them access. That's not our rule. That's a state regulation. And once students pass the HICET exam, they are awarded a diploma. Additionally, we will continue to support long-term suspension, Level 3 infractions, and our STAR program for short-term suspension. Regardless of how a student is assigned to the Restoration and Reentry Center, they will benefit from wraparound services that include social, emotional, academic and health services. We are continuing our work to increase partnerships for student services and look forward to growing those supports, not only at the Restoration and Reentry Center, but also all of our schools. And so you will see onsite providers of Finia Healthcare. We have established a partnership with them. And so they will be here for our students, not just at Restoration and Reentry Center, but across the district. And then I'll talk a little bit more about the academic instructional piece. Here's the proposed schedule. In this model, high school students are able to maintain six classes, ensuring that they can still earn credit towards graduation without as big a decrease in their course load. We will build student schedules based on transcript analyses, current, their current schedule at their home schools and what their needs are as a student. We will also be using a blended approach through what we think of as traditional classroom instruction as well as with online coursework through EdMintim. This will allow kids to re-enter their home schools with the skills and content knowledge needed to successfully step right back into their schedules, confident and ready to learn. Other highlights include the opportunities to provide small group intervention for working with social, emotional learning as well as mental and physical health through our partnerships with other agencies. One other piece I'd like to draw your attention to is regarding, regarding the schedule is the opportunity for daily advisory. Through the advisory structure, students at the Restoration and Reentry Center will benefit from the social, emotional learning and college and career readiness planning happening back at their home schools. Most importantly, we will be able to focus on self-advocacy, conflict resolution and agency needed to assist students with successful transition back to their home school as well as success while they're at the Restoration and Reentry Center. Students will now have options also through this model for post-secondary placement that allows them to connect with two-year and four-year schools, should that be their pathway, or enter the workforce if they are there through graduation. And the important thing is, our goal is to have them life-ready when they exit the Restoration and Reentry Center, whether that is to, at the end of graduation or whether that is when they return to their home schools. The goal is that they have the supports that they need to be successful. Based on trend data, this is the staffing model that we've proposed. There has been an intentional focus placed on the core math specifically to assist with the successful transition back to their home schools. And the reason why this is so important is the goal is if they're having to do a blended model approach to their learning, we will in the curriculum office work to align pacing guides with our coursework that's in EdMintim. So as they return to their home school, if they return mid-year, they're able to pick right back up on course with their peers who are back at their home schools. Or if they're returning at the beginning of a school year or at any point in the school year, we are on pace with those course assignments. And I am happy to answer any questions.
I wanted to ask, what is the shortest to longest that a student might be there?
So that's dependent upon the infraction that they commit and then the frequency and so on and so forth. So each situation is a little bit different based on the infraction that's committed. I can get an average of days for you, but I, I'm not sure of that right off the top of my head.
Okay. And so is it, is there ever an instance where a student might be there for the entire school year?
Yes.
Okay. What does parent engagement look like with this?
So glad you asked. And so Chris Clark is actually working on our reentry plan and our reentry team. So every student over the Restoration and Reentry Center will have a team of folks that will include their parents, the counselor and their advisor that will engage in the planning around that student, their schedule, social, emotional learning, conflict resolution, those pieces that will help transition that student back to their home school as well as ensure their success while they're there. And so he's working on that component to ensure that we have alignment, not just at Restoration and Reentry, but also at our, our regular schools.
The number, what number of students can you have there at any one time?
Sure. We could probably go up to about 120. On average, though, what I can tell you, alarm-term suspension, the average students per month is right around 71.
Okay. The other, you mentioned that there were going to be agencies that might provide small group intervention, maybe some individual counseling. Have those agencies been identified?
We are in the process of identifying that. And that is also along a side of our CI 3T work with resource alignment that we've been working on. And so working through Children's Services Fund and some other organizations to get them onboard and in our schools.
And then finally, you mentioned that there would be, I guess, a school counselor assigned to that site.
Yes, ma'am.
Will the students also have access to school social work intervention?
We are working on that piece, that component of it as well. We did, we will be asking for the council to pull small groups through conflict mediation and conflict resolution with our students as well, so that they can do some of those pieces with our kids.
Okay. And so when I think about the social worker, I just think about the other, because those are two different disciplines.
Yes, ma'am.
And so just thinking about the other things a social worker might add.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Of course. I was looking at the, at how many teachers you're going to be having at each one of those levels. And, thank you, the staffing model there. And one teacher at each, at the middle school, elementary, and?
STAR, short-term. That's our short-term suspension program for secondary students for, that we are recovering our attendance from.
So we can't, we really can't determine the level of student, the academic level of the students who were coming in. For example, how many elementary students you might get, or middle school, or whatever. And if you're heavy on the, let's say, middle school side with students, and you have one teacher, are you going to cut it at a certain number? Because we know with students who are struggling already academically and also with the behavior, we shouldn't have a classroom of 20 students at the middle school level.
Sure.
So how do you, how do you plan for?
So our trend data doesn't demonstrate that we are there, but what I can tell you is that Dr. Jameson, myself, and Mr. Weller, we will be monitoring those enrollment numbers and providing additional support. The other piece to note is that we will also arrange so that our staff that is there is also duly supported.
That's what I, that was going to be my next question. Glad you're anticipating that. I think that's it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the STAR program will be moving over to Mark Twain?
Yes, it is housed there currently.
It is there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I forgot about that, because I knew we had it at the admin building.
Yeah. And we did that the first year in.
And then we moved it on over there.
We transitioned it to Mark Twain.
All right. Is that program going to be expanding? Because I know when we first started off, it was kind of like the pilot, and we're just looking to build on it.
Absolutely. And so we are retooling with our school administrators to ensure that we are sending more students over to the STAR program that qualify. If they've had infractions around fighting and drug use, we do not assign them to the STAR program, but we are encouraging and doing some more tooling of our leadership so that they are more aware of the profile of students who go into the STAR program so that we will use it more frequently.
Can you tell me how this staffing compares to the staffing that was there before?
So the staffing numbers that you see here reflect the average number of student enrollment. And so when we talk about our full day versus half-day, none of our classes are really carrying more than 12 to 15 students in the morning or in the afternoon currently. And many of those classes are well under 10. And so we also, over time, again, that average students per month is right around 71 students. And so that's how the staffing was looked at. We looked at historical enrollment data, or historical data for students assigned to long-term suspension and the other programs, and we're really not approaching 100 kids on a consistent basis. And so the number tends to drop off throughout the school year. And so you'll see an influx at the beginning, and then it will drop down, then it will get a kick up, and then by the end of the school year, that number is well below.
I just had a quick question. Due to the nature of the students and the behaviors, what restorative practices are we looking at? And are we looking to do any restorative circles in that arena?
I am so glad that you asked. And so we will need to train staff at the Restoration Center around those restorative pieces. It will be an ask of the counselor that is there to lead some of that work, but it'll also be an ask of how we conduct classrooms over at the Restoration Center to ensure that we are in fact engaging in restorative practices.
It clicks off.
Good evening. I've asked Dr. Forbes to share information regarding the IB program because he has done a phenomenal job with getting us authorized. So at this time, and also, he is retiring, so I just want to publicly thank him for all of his work with IB. So can we give him a round of applause?
Good evening, Board. So just a little update on IB, where we're at, and just a brief overview of what IB is. So IB, the International Baccalaureate, is a global program in schools all over the world. And in order to be an IB school, you have to meet the IB criteria. So IB, you can actually get an IB education from first grade all the way to 12th, and then they have four different programs. The program we decided to attempt was something called the Diploma Program, which is in 11th and 12th grade. It's the oldest of the IB programs, started in 1968, I believe, so celebrated its 50th year last year. And you can see the quote there, IB is one of the most prestigious accomplishments for a high school student, not only in the U.S., but more importantly, the rest of the world. So the IB diploma, really, I think what kind of distinguishes it is a couple of things. First, it's a holistic approach. If we look at learning as a way to improve yourself and maybe improve others, IB has all these different components involved to try to do that. So there are components in the diploma program that improve you academically. There's program, there's components in the program to improve you socially and to improve you even physically. They kind of look at the whole person. And so in order to earn an IB diploma, so here's the big picture, as you can see, of how to earn the diploma. You can see in the middle, the IB learner profile. The IB learner profile are, there are 10 qualities that students, that IB wants students to try to accomplish, to improve upon, whether they're in first grade or in 12th grade. Some of those components are communication, being principled, being open-minded, being balanced, being reflective, all these things that really are kind of hard to measure in a way, but yet if you are, if you are a learner, whether you're in first grade or you are 75, these would be good things to try to improve yourself on, and those are the IB learner profiles. And then you can see the next ring out of that is the approaches to teaching and approaches to learning. IB believes that good teaching has several components, and that if learning's taking place, there'll be several learning components. And then the next circle, the Theory of Knowledge Extended Essay Creativity Activity Service, that's called the core, and that kind of makes the diploma program really kind of unique. You'll see the six subjects outside the core. One of the things, if, besides the holistic approach, another component of the IB diploma program is this idea of being global. So if you think about that learning takes place all over the world, what are the components in learning at schools all over the world if we were to make one global approach to learning? What would it look like? And IB thinks, well, here's one way we can have this summary of learning from all over the world. So you'll see that one of the, of the six components is something called language acquisition. So maybe in the United States, we don't emphasize this as much, but in other parts of the world, it's not uncommon to know two, three, four languages. It's part of your education. So IB says, well, we don't want, we want students to be proficient in a second language. So language acquisition is part of the IB diploma program. And you can see that the six subjects there, and I'll list them again here, we will start the program this fall, and we will offer courses in all six of those. Students can take, individual students can take one of those courses, or they can attempt to get the whole diploma. And if they get the whole diploma, then you must take a course and pass assessments, not one assessment, but several assessments, including internal assessments where students must complete a project. So I would say, people ask all the time, what's the difference between advanced placement and IB? One of the differences is that IB tends, AP tends to have one test at the end of the course, and your score is based on that one assessment. IB tends to have three or four assessments scattered throughout the course, and some of those aren't just a test that's graded by someone else. About 25 to 30% of all the courses are graded internally by the teacher teaching the course. 75 to 70% is graded by an outside source, but, and so that's one difference. And IB tends to be a little bit more skill-based than content-based. So also, this idea of this core component is pretty important in IB to earn the diploma. And this kind of brings in this idea of global and this idea of holistic approach. So you must take a course, if you're taking the IB diploma, called the Theory of Knowledge course. So it's a separate course, and what you do in the Theory of Knowledge course is you start thinking about what really is learning, why do we learn it, and why is this important? And how do we know if something is true or not? How do we know if learning is taking place? Most students, when they finish the IB diploma, many of them say this is the course that taught them how to think, is this Theory of Knowledge course. A lot of teachers fight to teach this course because of this active learning that's taking place at a creative level, at a evaluative level, at a synthesis level, at an analyzation level. It's all taking place during this Theory of Knowledge class. CAS is a component of the IB, which really, I think is kind of interesting because it does approach this holistic approach. You can see that it says community, action, and service. There are three parts of CAS, and one of those parts is that you have to do an activity. So you may be really, really, really gifted academically, but you aren't really, you haven't improved yourself physically. What can you do to improve yourself physically? You don't have to be a marathon runner, but can you improve yourself somehow physically? So there's a component there. You'll see there's a service component. What good is learning if it's only for yourself? Shouldn't learning also be for others? And so there's this component within CAS that you must do something, must do a service project for others that's beyond yourself. You can see the Extended Essay. Universities all over the world really like this idea. The kids are doing, it's not original research, but it's research that is freshman college level while they're in high school. It takes place over two years. Students work with a teacher. They come up with a topic. They research that topic. They write 4,000 words, no more than 4,000 words. IB sends the, the IB sends the paperback if it's more than 4,000 words. And they say, edit it. It's got to be 4,000 words or less. And then you present on this. So you get scores in those, and then if you, with your six assessments and these three components added up, you get a total IB score, and if your score is appropriate, then you earn an IB diploma. So how did I, North go about pursuing this? Well, it was about two years ago that I came to the board and presented on the IB diploma, and the board said, this is a good idea. Let's pursue this. So that started in May of 2017. We ended, we entered then the candidate phase in November of 2017, and from November of 2017 until April of this year, we were a candidate school. And for those 18 months, there is, there is a lot of preparation. So IB says, kind of has this idea, they're not snooty about it, but they say, here is the criteria. There's about 78 criteria for IB, give or take a few. I don't know the exact number. And they basically say, you must meet this standard. If you don't meet the standard, you can't be an IB school. And so we had to, this takes a while to meet all these standards. In fact, they even say you can't meet the standards before a certain date. They want to make sure that we have everyone onboard before we, before you're authorized. They want you in for the long term. They want quality, and they want long term. They're less interested in quality, quantity. They're less interested in quantity. They're really interested in quality. So we, we have gone through this whole process. There was a site visit in March, and on April 30th of this year, we found out we were an authorized IB world school to offer the diploma program. And a school cannot just offer an IB diploma program. You have to meet this authorization. So, and again, IB says you must meet these criteria first. You can't just say, I want to teach IB classes. It doesn't work that way. You have to meet the standards. So we met the standards, and I can tell you that one of the things, out of those 78 standards, one of the standards is, did you have all the stakeholders involved? And I am very happy to say that was one of our strongest areas of the 78. The IB folks said, overall, we did things very, very well, and these, and those folks I have listed there, from the board all the way down to students, were really involved, and there was a lot of involvement. So yes, I got to direct the orchestra, but there were a lot of people involved in this who made IB possible. And IB wants to see that all these folks are onboard, or you'll get to be an IB school. So it was a pretty happy day to, on April 30th, when we found out. Questions? This is one of the things you're required to have for IB, is you have to have a IB, I forgot what it's called, brochure, an IB brochure. And so here's the IB brochure that we had with the help of Communications Department. And again, there's all these people who were involved in allowing us, helping us become an IB world school.
I'd like to say thank you for all of your hard work and in getting this program for one of our schools. Good job.
Yes.
And do I have some questions down here?
I just had a quick question. And I don't know if this is a question that we can answer right now, but I would love to be able to, to be able to consider this later. If I was a student at McClure and I wanted to go to the IB program, how would that look? And is that something that we can basically foresee doing, especially since we're having so many different programs at different schools?
And how do we advertise? Do we let them know?
So we are, a lot of this work starts before they enter 11th grade. So we started a pre-IB cohort at Cross Keys last year so that students could feed into McClure North and be prepared for the rigor of IB. This year, we will start that same cohort at Ferguson Middle, so those teachers are being trained through project-based learning so that those students can then feed into the IB program. I will also say the ninth and 10th grade at McClure North, the teachers are extremely excited. They've done some wonderful project-based learning activities with those students from the middle school cohort, preparing them to enter into the IB 11th and 12th grade at North.
They're, part of the documents we submitted were, is a potential transfer policy. And so it has been written, but it has to be vetted first, and of course, the board would need to approve that. But it's only been written. It hasn't been approved, and haven't moved forward with it.
And how would we let those students know in other schools that they would have that opportunity?
So at Cross Keys and at Ferg Middle, a part of the IB coordinator's responsibility, Ms. Dr. Forbes, was to go to those schools and recruit students, encourage students to be a part of the IB, we call it a challenge cohort, because IB is very strict about branding programs if they have not authorized. So at the middle school, they were, it was our challenge cohort. And so based on students' academic potential, we encourage students to be a part of the cohort at Ferg Middle, well, at Cross Keys last year, but at Ferg Middle and Cross Keys this upcoming year.
Okay. So they would be the freshmen coming in, and you start preparing them in their freshman year to go for the sophomore.
Junior year.
For junior year. So sophomores who have not been a part of your cohort, how do they, how do they become a part, or how do you plan to recruit those students?
So we are working, so the, so part of the coordinator's job was to work with those students and identify students who had taken the coursework necessary to be successful with the IB cohort. We do have a few students who are missing a few courses, and we are working with those students to get them caught up so that it won't be an issue for them if they're 11th grade. The nice thing about IB is they have the diploma program, which is what our goal is, is for all of our students to complete the entire coursework for the diploma program. But you also can be a part of the experience by taking some of the other courses.
I did, there were several opportunities to speak. I did, there, there were several opportunities to speak and present IB. So there were some parent nights that I presented. There was also at STEAM, the, in January, there was a big STEAM night at STEAM. And I was allowed to present about IB also there. Different eighth grade groups I've presented to, student groups, yeah, parent groups, so.
And so one of the most informative sessions have been the student groups at North. And what they've shared about their ninth grade and 10th grade experience, ninth grade experiences at, in the cohort. And it was interesting because the perception was that students didn't want to be in this cohort, that they felt isolated. But what was interesting, students shared, no, we want to be a part of a cohort. We appreciate the support that we have amongst our peers. And they also felt like they wanted their teachers to give them more voice in their classrooms during the PBL session. So I thought those were the most informative sessions we had.
Yeah, so IB does not require a student committee. I thought it was a great idea, so I included that in North. So North has a student IB committee. We meet once a quarter and get feedback from students about what's. There's also a student committee or teacher committee also, yeah.
I wanted to just get clarification on something. You said that this year there was a challenge cohort at Cross Keys. And next year, there will be one at both of the middle schools.
Yes, ma'am.
Right? And so those kids are being prepared for the possibility of being a part of IB. But does that mean that the kids coming from Ferguson Middle will have the opportunity to attend school at McClure?
North.
North?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So if, if the policy that I wrote suggested that, that if it would be approved, that students would be presented in eighth grade and that they would be given the opportunity. You can apply to STEAM High School, you could go to North and take the IB. Or you could go to McClure, and if you go to McClure, you're going to get a very good AP education. And that's the way I presented it to the eighth graders here and then the eighth graders at Cross Keys. You had these options.
So if you were a part of the cohort group, maybe you just moved into the district. Can they, can they be a part of it once they get to their freshman?
One thing that really that I like about IB is that IB, you must write this policy and it's called a special education policy, that really IB should be for any student that has the determination to make it. And so students who enter the district, if they don't, don't have the coursework, is there a way they can earn that coursework and make up that coursework in order to take the diploma program? If they entered at the appropriate time, they would be in good stead. Since IB's been doing this for 50 years, they've had that happen. So they give some suggestions on how you go about making students who enter after their, after their freshman year, how can they still be in the diploma program if they've transferred in? If they had a school that didn't have world language, how do you approach that? Because they don't want to compromise on the world language, but, so they give you some suggestions. Any student that shows interest, we have an IB counselor at North and she meets with the student who shows interest and says, this is, that's another thing, IB wants all these folks in the district or all these people in the building to be trained by attending IB workshops. And you have to attend the IB workshops, you can't attend Rogue IB, you have to attend their workshop. So we have a counselor who has attended IB workshop.
Is there any risk for overcrowding or? Because what I'm envisioning is that you already have kids who are attending McClure North. And then you're recruiting kids out of the middle school to come over. So I'm just wondering what happens if there are too many kids identified? And what does that do to the kids who already live in that area who are entitled to attend that school?
That would be a great problem to have. I will say that there are some prerequisite courses that students would need to complete before entering the IB program. So that in itself sometimes will identify students who could be successful in the program. So there's a list of prerequisite courses that students would need to take. Now, there are a few courses that you, if you don't have them, we could help you make up some of those. But there's an overall list of prerequisite courses that.
I'm sorry, these prerequisite courses, are these being taken at the middle school level?
Foreign language and math, yes.
Some at, some at the middle school and then some in high school. So when a kid says, I want to be an IB, we have a list of courses and say, hey, if you haven't taken these yet before 11th grade, before you apply to be in the IB program at the second semester of your 10th grade year, make sure you've taken these.
Okay, so there's not an issue of children attending Ferguson Middle not having access to that same coursework, right?
No.
Okay, so they could go, they could say, hey, I'm interested in it, I'm gonna come over. And then they would just need to make sure they take these additional courses if they didn't get them in order to be a part of IB.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And I would like to just share some data, you know, the Gates Foundation supports the IB program. And just to give you an idea, there was a study done with the Chicago Consortium and with the University of California, just talking about how IB impacts students from lower income areas. And with the comparison, 39% of non-IB freshmen entering college completed. 80% of IB students from free and reduced lunch completed college because of their experience. And they've correlated that with their experience with IB.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
We had cookies earlier. We had our food truck out there. We are in the process of completing our second year with our contract with SFE. And so Antonio is going to give you an overview of this year.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Davis, Ferguson Florissant family. If we haven't met, my name is Antonio Adams and I am your General Manager of Food Service. Today, I will be presenting your 2018-2019 Food Service Update. We've done a lot this year, extremely excited about some of the things we've done. And we'll start tonight by reviewing our agenda. The first thing we will review is SFE's culture and mission. Then we will get into our employee, our, our programs offered this year, including Roving Chef, Farmer's Market, Rainbow Days, and our adult and family cooking class. Moving on to our employee appreciation initiatives, some of our financial successes, and our 2019-2020 initiatives, including food truck operations and utilizing funds from our Breakfast in the Classroom grant. So first, SFE is dedicated to K-12 child nutrition. It's literally all my company does. We fuel our students to reach their highest potential through deliciously fresh-from-scratch meals, unmatched menu variety, and five-star onsite support. In doing so, we improve participation and revenues for schools wherever we go. And I failed to mention, every picture that you see in this brief is from our district. So as you can see, that's Chef Susan there, but every picture you'll see are our students and our staff that are here doing this work every day. The mission discussed is one we take very seriously and we understand success isn't something that just happens. Success lies in our ability to adapt, be flexible, and engage our students and community in order to provide the best service possible. We're able to engage our students, staff, and community through a variety of programs that we offer. This section of the brief is dedicated to the programs we offered this past year. So the first, this is our Roving Chef concept. And this concept was designed to be an interactive cooking and learning experience, which helps students get excited about food and nutrition. It's a hands-on cooking class which takes about approximately 45 minutes to an hour to complete. Our chefs work alongside students and sometimes building staff on creating fresh, easy-to-prepare meals that can be easily repeated at home under adult supervision. When preparing meals, we don't use knives or cook over open flames. If you look to the top left, that is the students at Griffith cooking with Chef Tori. They're cooking omelets, but it's over a wok, so there's no open flame or any safety issues there because obviously safety is paramount, especially when you're dealing with students. Students are given gloves, aprons, chef hats, and recipes to prepare meals with. At the conclusion of the event, each student receives a recipe and a certificate of participation. This year, Roving Chef events were held at Combs, Cool Valley, Griffith, and STEAM. We've noticed that this year it was a, a great utilization in terms of utilizing it for a PBIS reward incentive and expect to expand the program next year. Our next program is our Rainbow Days and Farmer's Market program. As you know, we have salad bars in all of our schools which offer items like fresh broccoli, fresh celery, and apples and oranges daily. We received a grant from Desi Fresh Life, which is an elementary school-focused grant that allows us to purchase and offer exotic fruits and vegetables to our students. And we do so through two similar concepts, as you can see, Rainbow Days and Farmer's Market. Now, our Rainbow Days concept is what we do with these fruits and veggies is we replace the normal salad bar items for the day. Our nutritionists will go to that individual school post by the salad bar. And with these items like kumquats, asparagus, grapefruits, sugar snap peas, a lot of the things that, you know, even some adults don't see, we put those on the salad bar. And our nutritionist Camille actually discusses the nutrition facts with the students, encourages them to make a rainbow on their plate, you know, that's hitting their reds, their greens, and, and other veggies and fruits, and encouraging them to continue to eat healthy. Because we know sometimes when we talk about what our students want to eat, it's not always what's best for them. Sometimes they can be focused on the processed foods, the burgers, and things like that. So if we can get in, especially at a young age, and teach them about the importance of fruits and vegetables, play and things like that, we think that's been very, very positive. And our Farmer's Market concept is the same as our Rainbow Days concept. The only difference is if you look at your top left, where you see the Farmer's Market, our chefs cut up the fruit, prepare a great spread, and the students get to see that. And the items are also cooked if you look at your, your, out my bottom left. All elementary sites have seen at least one of these concepts this past year. We look to do it again next year, it seemed to be very successful, the students seem to like it. And I think being there, the, the thing that sticks with me the most is the students aren't afraid to try something new. So a lot of the times, we, we don't think that they'll experiment or they're stuck in their ways, they want this. But a lot of the times, if you just talk with the student and, and tell them the benefit of trying something new, they're, they're able to do it. And we've seen that. The next, Dr. Thurman. If you remember last year, we wanted to see an adult cooking class and that is what we did. The intent behind this program was to provide fresh, fun, and cost-effective meals for adults and families in our community. So this event took place April 23rd at McClure. I know Heiko was there, a few other staff members were there as well. The menu was composed of like bowl recipes, so like a Chinese bowl, nacho bowl, taco bowl, and things of that nature. Participants enjoyed the program and requested more of these classes. So we had additional classes scheduled, but because of low participation or low RSVPs, we just consolidated everyone into that one date. We had some before and some after, but, and we were having individuals RSVP before, so we know how much food to get. But we did not get a lot of participation on those other dates, so we compiled them all into one. And we plan to expand this program next year as well. In our community event support, we've been fortunate to provide support at numerous district and community events this year to include the Ferguson Youth Initiative Brunch, Kaboom Playground Build, and Ribbon Cutting, and several events for the Challenger Learning Center to include the 15th Anniversary Event. And they also had a VIP event that we sponsored as well. But one of the events that sticks out to me the most is our Heart Month Yoga. So February is American Heart Month, which centers around getting active and managing blood pressure. So Camille, our district nutritionist, she's, I guess you would call her a yogi, so she's a yoga instructor. And she created a 30-minute session for admin, building, teachers, and, and everyone here, and offered it every Friday in February. And it was a great success. That picture, if you look to my bottom right, was taken by me. I was smart enough to take the picture instead of somebody taking the one of me struggling. So it was, it was a really good experience, though we had a good turnout of every event. And it was something that we really enjoyed. And again, we always appreciate the opportunities to serve the district. But most importantly, to the most important thing we do, engage the students. So we held menu-focused groups at multiple schools this year and intentionally held at least one at elementary, middle, and high school level. One of the biggest things we, we try to do is, once we hold these menu-focused groups, it's not just to hold the groups, it's to hear what the students have to say and try to make changes as quickly as we can. And one of the things that we were able to do is this year, we had one at STEAM. And the students were saying, before we came, so back when we had it, when, when the district had a previous food service provider, that they had strawberry milk. Some people were saying they, they didn't like it because it was 2%, some people said that they did. Well, luckily, the USDA regulations changed and we can serve 1% milk, which means the students get a little more flavor. So what we did was, we immediately acted on it, called our vendor at Prairie Farms, asked for four crates per school just to see how the students like it, because you don't want to over-order, because you don't really know how they're going to like it or not. And we were able to get that strawberry milk into the school that next week. And it took that long only because we had to get enough inventory from Prairie Farms. But showing the kid, and, and I'll tell you that story just to let you know, we're not having these focus groups just to have a focus group. We're having them to take action as soon as the students say something. If they feel like they want an addition or a subtraction, we make sure that we take that into account. And student engagement is everywhere. So either myself, my two chefs, my nutritionist, we're in the schools daily, so we just talk to the kids. Formally, we do focus groups, but a lot of the times, it's good to just talk to them and see what they like, see what they don't like, and get some of their suggestions. So that's one of the daily things we do as well. Employee appreciation, so as leaders, we know you need team members who go above and beyond in order to be successful. And we believe our cafe workers do just that. In order to show our appreciation and also ensure we remain focused on student and community satisfaction, we've implemented multiple employee appreciation initiatives. And the first one being the Cut Above the Rest Award. Now, this is a monthly award earned by the cafe that best accomplishes our focus areas, which are positive cafe staff relationships with students, teachers, administrators, and principals, willingness to help others, understanding our number one priority, which is to serve students in the community, respecting themselves and their team, and overall, taking responsibility for their kitchens. The intent behind beginning this program again was to award the team members for performing above and beyond and to create a positive culture based on teamwork, respect, and selfless service. So what, what does the staff win? So the winning cafe staff is awarded the Cut Above the Rest Cutting Board, personalized certificates of appreciation, gift cards, a meal prepared by our chef team, and a place in our food service monthly newsletter. So one thing that we can say, and I'll just, I'll say this about both of these, Cut Above the Rest and Decor to Adore is, we've, we've really noticed that the employees are, are more satisfied about working when they know that someone cares. So both of these awards, we invite the principals, staff, administrators to come to. Ms. Medrulik is usually always there, Kevin Hampton is there sometimes. The district is there taking photos, so they really feel like they're ingrained in the school culture where as, sometimes in the past, they may have felt like they're just food service and not really part of the, the community. And every time we've done one of these awards, a principal has came. So we do one every month and every single time a principal has came. So just that community feel and that support, it, it's relayed through our ladies. And whenever times get tough like they always do, or we have to adapt or be flexible, they can always rely on that or remain on that and, and stay focused. So our next award is the Decor to Adore Award. And this is a monthly award earned by the staff with the most creative and appealing cafe decor. The intention behind this award is to allow our team members to have some fun and show off their creative side. This also makes cafeterias more welcoming and can jumpstart communication among staff and cafes, staff and students that normally may not have occurred. The winning team receives certificates of appreciation, gift cards, a meal prepared by our chef team, and a place in our monthly newsletter. We also do employer appreciation celebrations, we've only been here two years, but every December we do that, where either we, my company will pay for an event to be catered or one of the chefs will cater an event for all of our employees. My company takes care of the gift cards. We do prizes such as TVs, iPads, we've done a lot of different things for the employees. And they seem to really appreciate that and we appreciate doing it. So we also have a responsibility to the district and community to be good stewards of finances and ensure our financial obligations are met. And we have done very well this past year. So our return was over $1 million, so it was $1,097. We easily exceeded our, you know, our contracted return. A dollar seven cost per meal, one of the lowest in the region, in my region, so in my company. A reduction in payroll and labor expenses. À la carte snack sales increased by over $5,000. So the, the snack sales increased and we reduced the. So the snack sales increased, and we reduced the cost of each individual item. So we cut it down to, if we're buying chips for 52 cents, we're selling them for 50 cents. We're going very extremely low, just because we don't want to make money off the kids, we want to provide a service, right? And so in doing that, we've actually increased our sales. And obviously, you know Tori and Susan, our district chefs, they prepare the great board dinners, and our catering sales have increased by over $10,000. So, quickly, we will touch on several initiatives we're scheduled to begin next year, if you will have us. The first is beginning a Second Chance Breakfast Program at all of our secondary sites. So a Second Chance Breakfast Program is where we continue to offer breakfast after the first period, and we do that using strategically placed carts, so the students don't have to come to us. We go into the school, we work with the staff and administrators to see where the students are, we view where the students are most likely to be at, and we move the carts there. They're mobile, so if where the students are changed, we can adapt and adjust to that. These kiosks will be stocked with grab-and-go breakfast items students can eat on their way to the next period of instruction. Our goal is to reach students who may arrive later in the morning, those who aren't hungry as soon as they arrive to school but get hungry a little later, and those who may eat a very early breakfast but would like a snack before lunch. We've been fortunate enough to work with the Partners for Breakfast in the classroom to secure a grant to cover the purchase of items such as the breakfast kiosks, the mobile point-of-sale systems, refrigerators, and freezers. So all of these items are purchased through the Second Chance Breakfast Program, the Partners for BIC Grant. We can also utilize them for lunch. So you have McClure, which is gaining a good amount of students. Now, we are able to use those kiosks for lunch as well. We might use those for snack bar items, or there's a lot of different things we can use those for now. And with the addition of freezers and coolers, with the additional students, it's not an out-of-pocket expense for the district in order to get those items, we've got a grant for it. So we win both ways in that regard. Digital production records. So production records are documents that provide a daily written history of foods planned, prepared, and served. So we utilize those to forecast menu items in the future and also to negate overproduction. Production records are required per USDA when participating in the National School Lunch Program, School Breakfast Program, and the After School Snack Program, which we all do. Currently, these documents are printed off in binders, and our managers complete these documents daily. But with the implementation of our digital production record program, we'll be able to significantly reduce our paper consumption, because all of those items are now on tablets that the district already has for food service. So there's no outside cost, and we don't have to worry about printing paper every month for managers to use this documentation for. And we will be one of the first districts in my company to do so. And food truck operations. So we currently have the food truck right outside the main doors. We were serving cookies and milk today, just to give you a view of how the food truck looks. We also had it at the Kaboom Event as well. We can be, we plan to use that item for PBIS incentive rewards. I have to talk with Laura, but exactly, on, to get exactly how she wants to see it utilized, but you can use it for teacher appreciation. And it's not just a trailer, it has the grill in there, the fryer in there, the refrigerator in there, the cooler, the hot holding unit, sanitation, everything that you need to cook in a mobile unit, we have in there already. And lastly, we'll continue to offer our concepts that are already proven, Roving Chef, Adult Cooking Classes, Focus Groups, and Farmers Markets. Lastly, thank you. We appreciate being here, we appreciate your support, seeing everyone in the schools, working alongside everyone, we really appreciate being here. In year two, we really think we've made a lot of leeway, and we really hope that we get a year three, so we can make even more leeway. So, thank you for your time.
This was, his presentation was for information only, however, our next agenda item. Time finding kumquats.
Do you go to Earth Dance?
No.
So we get most of our produce for those days on Earth Dance?
Kumquats?
Mm-hmm. So you can either go to Earth Dance or Thies. We like to go to the local farms to get that produce, and that's what we do.
All right. That's wonderful. Okay, so at this time, the DESI, do you want to read it, Laura?
I will read it.
All right.
DESI regulations require that school districts bid out the food management services, and we did so two years ago, and SFE did win. It is a renewable every-year contract, and so administration is seeking approval from the board to renew SFE's contract for the next year.
Do I have a motion to renew the contract? Do I have any questions, comments, concerns? Nope. Except I won't kumquats. Okay. All in favor of accepting the contract? Thank you. Opposed? Hearing none? Thank you for another year.
Thank you.
Laura, Budget Amendment.
At the beginning of the year, at this time of year, every year, the board does approve our budget for the next upcoming year, and as you know, our budget is very fluid and changes daily, literally changes daily. So at the beginning of the year, it's our best guess estimate of what's going to happen. This year, we are going to need to increase our general budget, general fund budget by $2.1 million. A lot of that expense was because at the beginning of the year, last year, we had all of our substitute expense over, and the subs are paid out of the special fund, and when we move to the contracted service, that is now in the general fund. So I am requesting that the board increase the general fund budget by $2.1 million in order for us to be compliant with state statutes. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Our next agenda is the adoption of our 1920 school year operating in capital bond budget. We look at our revenue first. The budget is based around revenue, and again, I'm going to tell you that our revenue is a daily fluid change. I had numbers of what our budget revenue is going to look like this year, and today we received a payment, and it's, it was a nice payment, and so this is changing my whole thing, but I didn't have time to change my thing. So I have some news for Dr. Davis after this about what this budget actually looks like, but we did receive some additional dollars that we weren't anticipating from delinquent taxes. So I'm very excited about that. Like I said, it changes daily. 54% of our revenue is, of our local revenue comes from tax dollars. 2019, as many of you, all of you live here, so you knew that this was a reassessment year, and you should have received your assessments, and you noticed that your assessments increased. It increased by 17.45%. I'm sorry. Well, yours may have not have, but as a whole, our assessments increased by 17.45%. We do have a Hancock Amendment, the state does, that does not allow us to raise taxes by more than the CPI, so even though that's great news for our community members, well, it's also great news, we're not going to gouge you with taxes. So we will not see a big increase of taxes this next year because of the, even though we had a large assessment. So we should see a slight increase of about $440,000 to the local tax revenue. Now, in odd years, we cannot adjust our tax rate. Currently, we roll back our tax rate, and in those odd years, I cannot do anything to that tax rate. But in the next year, in the even years, we can, I can come to the board and you can waive that rollback. So we could see additional dollars in the future. So looking at our long-term financial plan, this isn't the end of the world with our assessments going up, we can make some adjustments if we need to, if we need those revenue dollars. So we do receive our final assessment information in July. We will set our tax rate, as you know, in October, in September. So, but for right now, and for budget purposes, I increased the local revenue by $440,000. The state for our local, also in our local revenue, the state has a one-cent sales tax distributed across the state. That money is collected locally and sent to the state, and then the state distributes that by the weighted average daily attendance. I do believe because of the addition of our preschool with our pre-K2 centers, that we will see an increase of our weighted average daily attendance. So I have included an increase of about $890,000 for our proxy money, because the state is also raising their proxy, they're seeing a good increase of proxy money too. So I think that with those two combined, we should see about $900,000 increase to the budget. Our county revenue just continues to remain flat, so I continue to keep that flat in the budget. Our state revenue assumptions, so 30% of our revenue does come from state funding. The state did fully fund the formula this year, so that's good news. Again, with the increase of our pre-K2 centers, we will see an increase of our weighted average daily attendance. The other thing that we, that strategy that we implemented this year, and it's a two-fold strategy, is that Dr. Davis allowed us to add attendance secretaries to the high schools to really concentrate on that attendance. So the secretaries will be able to focus on the attendance, and we believe that that's going to generate additional dollars too. With those two factors, and also with the increase of the funding for the state, I believe that we might see up to $2.9 million. Again, this is all, what happens every day is different, but in the budget, I was able to put in an additional $2.9 million. Our federal funding, 9% of that revenue comes from the district. We do receive a lot of funding because we are a community eligibility program, where all of our students eat free breakfast and lunch. However, we've been on that for several years now, and so I will not, I don't expect to see an increase because our enrollment has remained pretty much flat. And then our federal revenue, I just kept flat in the budget because we're just, we're reimbursed. So whatever programs we have, we are just reimbursed for that. So we, I remained, kept the federal revenue flat. And then our other local revenue assumptions, we do, we are going to sell two of our buildings this fiscal year, and so there is revenue included in the budget that will be used on capital, on capital expenditures, and that revenue will be accounted for later on in this budget presentation. So 57% of our, as you can see on this slide, 57% of our revenue is from local taxes, 31 is from state, about 12%, 12%, or 9% is from federal, and then we get smaller bits from county and local. And then the majority of our fund does go into the special fund to pay for our teacher salaries, so the majority of 58% of our money goes into the special fund. Now, I'm going to talk about expenditures. As you all just saw, had happened before me, there were a lot of expenditures that just happened. I shared with Dr. Davis, he and I met about this budget, and I, and we were both very concerned about a lot of the expenditures that were happening. However, because of all the restructuring that we've been doing, we've been able to free up some of these resources, and I said to him, the conversations that many of us had five years ago, when I very first took over, where we sat down at a table and we had to cut the budget and had to cut the programs, was excruciating, and it was really hard, and we really hadn't rebounded from that for a long time. And so with all of these changes, we have been able to put more resources into, it was exciting to be able to work on this budget. I worked very closely with Tiffany and her team, and with assistant superintendents, and we were able to sit down and actually talk about what strategies. I want to commend my teammates, because they've been very thoughtful and thorough in thinking about ways to do things efficiently, and what can we cut, and what can we do things efficiently. I'm very happy, you know, the principals, we sat down with staffing meetings, we've been having staffing meetings for almost a year now, it seems like. The principals have been very thoughtful about their staffing as well. We just had a conversation earlier this week with a principal who had some great ideas about what he wanted to do with some staff members. So we've really been doing some really thorough things. So because of all of this, you, I'm not freaked out about all this stuff that we saw earlier, because it was a lot of money, and I know that you're very concerned about it, but I want you to understand that because of the changes that you've implemented, we've been able to put more money into the classroom, and that's exciting to me. Instead of having to cut those programs, we're actually able to add and to be able to help our students. So I had, so even with this budget, you did see a lot of things that you just approved. I am very confident that we'll be able to cover those expenditures. So the negotiations, we were able to give a 3.2%, 3.26% increase for the teachers and support staff, and so that was a result with all of the employee groups, that was an increase to the budget of about $1.9 million. We did not, we've been still having some low claims with our insurance, so I did not increase the insurance costs for this next year again. This year has been a little bit more trying, we have had some higher costs, so this might be the last year of that, but we've been able to maintain our insurance costs for like the last three years. So that's been very helpful to our budget. So like I said, additional resources were added for core curriculum and the assessment software. However, I feel that the district will be able to cover those. Additional resources then, again, as you noticed, were added for the socio-emotional learning for pre-K through 12. We did add expenses for the cost for staffing and instructional materials for our new IB program, our innovation school, and our restoration center. And then again, and then of course, the additional resources that were added for the security budget for the additional SRO and elementary security officers. So those were the big-ticket items that were added to the budget this year. We were able to, through attrition, we were able to see, to reduce certified staff positions by eight positions, which saved us about $655,000. We eliminated a principal position, and that was about $126,000 savings. We had 22 retirees this year, so the turnover savings that we saw was about $842,000. And again, we continue to look at data. We, this has been the most data-driven team, you know, led by Dr. Davis. We look at data and really analyze things before we make these decisions, and so you can, you can be assured that all of the expenditures that we do look at have embedded very thoroughly and thoughtfully. So as you can see by this graph, 46% of our revenue, or of our expenditures, go towards certified salaries, and 20% go to benefits, and then the 23.6% go to the non-certified staff members. 12.2% goes to purchase services, and 7%, or 9% goes to purchase services, and 7% goes to materials and supplies. So breaking it down by where all of the money goes by function, is what we call that, instruction gets about 70% of this, of the expenditures. And as you can see, it's broken down. Early ed expenditures, I'm happy to report to go up this, not happy, but I am happy to report that we're able to put more resources into early ed this year because of the way that we've structured the preschool program, and that's very exciting as well. So with all of those expenditures, we are going to see, our operating revenue expenditures are going to be over our operating revenue by about close to $500,000, which our operating balance, fund balance is going to be lower to about 16.57%. I thought it was going to be worse. This is, this year is, the curriculum team really put a lot of thought and a lot, we had a lot of needs, and so I explained to Dr. Davis that there was a lot of one-time costs that were included in this, and Tiffany and her team, again, have done a very good job of presenting me with a three-year plan about what that looks like. And I can assure you that those next two years, we're not going to see that many expenses, so a lot of these expenses are one-time expenses. And so I do believe that in our long-term plan, that we will be able to build our budgets, our fund balances back up to where they need to be. So as you can see, most of our expenditures are in the special fund, again, because our biggest expenditures are for teachers' salaries. And as you can see, we've come a long way, baby, with our spending, and so we, our spending has increased a lot. But again, it's for good things, for things that are going into the classroom, we're really able to focus our dollars on the students, which is very, really good. And so our fund balances have just been kind of staying there. However, I believe that with these changes, we will be able to start increasing our fund balances again as well. And I'm going to invite Mr. O'Neill up. He's going to discuss the capital and bond expenditures.
Thank you. So this is just kind of an overview, and I'll give a little bit of detail, but not a lot more to take up your time. But on the bond side, we have equipment and other capital outlay replacements, which includes some of the restructuring costs that you've already approved, the fencing, for example, from tonight, and we're going to be doing some relocation of cameras and playgrounds and combi offices and things that we can use from schools that aren't going to be used and moved to schools where they can be used, and also our innovation school and some flooring and other asphalt-type projects for that. It also includes the grounds and custodial equipment, a lighting lease payment that we've had for about seven or eight years from operating our lighting seven years ago, and some audiovisual projects as well. The infrastructure and building system includes the mechanical, electoral, and plumbing upgrades. The one that I'm most excited about is when we do have our admin center empty, we're going to transfer our own staff, but it's going to cost a few dollars, but not much, to transfer the boiler from there to Johnson-Wall Bash. It's our most inefficient boiler in the district right now, is a Johnson-Wall Bash, which is hard to believe, and it needs to be replaced. So as a cost saving, we're going to be able to remove the one from admin, move it to Johnson-Wall Bash, using our own staff and our own manpower, and actually reduce the cost of that and have a more efficient system. So that's one of the exciting things in MEP for, and we'll be spending some money for some of the chiller at the hub at McClure that you've already approved, and a few other projects for some rooftop units and things to upgrade. Also roofing repairs, paving replacement repairs, flooring replacement repairs, some security equipment on our buildings, and our safety, which is our fire alarms and burglar alarms, and some lighting LED upgrades, we're going to continue this year to get better lighting in our schools, and site improvements, which is landscaping mulch of some of our athletic fields and so forth. There's also school allocations, which each school will submit their request for those allocations. And our miscellaneous emergency projects is always important, because we try to budget the best we can, but there's always those projects where a boiler goes down, or a chiller, and it wasn't planned, it shouldn't have at this point, but we need to repair it or replace it. That also includes money for technology services, and the big projects are Safety and Security Entry System, $3.4 million, that's the one that we've been waiting for, for our elementary and middle schools, that will include an access control system, the identification management system for guests, and the card reader system for our doors. We plan on having that at our next board meeting. It's been a long process, so we included my staff technology to get their input. We used two outside sources to help us with the specs, to make sure we had everything we needed to make our schools as safe as possible. to make our schools as safe as possible. We're reconvening with the final specs right now. We should go out to bid, and we plan to have it at our, at the next board meeting for approval. And, oop, wrong way. Uh-oh. Let's go Blues. Okay, so this one's a little shorter. This is the capital budget. And these first items under equipment and other capital outlier are revenue that we receive back from these programs. There's Title I equipment, which is instructional equipment, and that's Grant, and Carl Perkins equipment, which is vocational equipment, which also we get the money back for, and insurance replacement for any of our insurance claims. And until we get paid back, we use those funds of $25,000, but we get those reimbursed as well. But we also have food service equipment. This year, the biggest thing is a, a big freezer that we have to move from the old plant. And it's, it, and the timing as it went, it's broken. So it was good timing. We're going to replace it anyway. So we'll have the site improvements that are being going on in the back of this building, which are the parking lot, the salt storage, and equipment storage, and fencing, and other items, and lighting. And then the back of the building also for our upgrades in the interior, which are walls and restrooms and a kitchenette, and some other areas that we're billing out, and then the $1.2 million for Waterford demolition. And the final thing is a certificate of deposit lease payment, which includes the principal and interest on the current building that we're, that we're in, and also the bus leases, which is the newest item. And that is all for me. And then I can say, let's go Blues, right?
Wait a minute.
I can't.
No, you can't. Oh, now you like did something there. Okay, hold on. Sorry, technical difficulty. Okay. So in summary, expenditures exceeded our revenue by about $440,000, which resulted in a drop of the fund balance to 16.57%. Many of the expenditures that were added to the budget are one-time purchases, and these will directly impact our student learning. We are in the process of creating a long-term financial plan, and over the next few months, I will be working with that. We will be bringing that to you, and we just need to do this to ensure continued financial stability and fund balance growth. We continue to review all revenue expenditures, and they will always be evaluated throughout the year to make sure that we have adequate resources to provide the quality education that our students deserve. And so administration is requesting for the board to approve the 1920 budget. Now we can say, let's go Blues. Are there any questions?
I mean, I don't know if it's the right time to ask it, but I guess it could be revenue coming in. What are we doing with, so I know that there's a lot of transition in regards to stuff. What are we doing with that stuff and storage? So say, for instance, I was teaching fourth grade. Fourth grade class is no longer there. What are we doing with storage stuff?
So that's all going to be moved.
Can we have an auction?
Well, most of it's going to be moved. We're still going to use what we have. So if you had a fourth grade class, and that's going to be a third grade class, we're going to make sure that has all the third grade things it needs. But the fourth grade moved somewhere, and so we're going to move that fourth grade equipment to that new fourth grade class. So everything's going to be redistributed. We're working on that form right now, and we'll start moving the furniture once we get the boxes done. Access to what?
Yes. So I can, I'll address that. So we will probably have some excess furniture and things. What, we will come to the board and ask you to surplus it. I was thinking that's a great revenue source to have like a big yard sale, maybe in the fall after the dust settles, and before we demolish the administration center there, because there's a lot of stuff in there that they need to get out and repurpose. But what can't be repurposed, you know, we need to either throw away or we can sell. And so we will come to the board and ask you to surplus that material, and then we can have a big garage sale. And you can have every chance, like everybody else. Legally, we have to, to do it for everybody, so. No, I, I thank you. That was a, that was a great thought, Dr. Graves.
Thank you so much.
We've had a lot of deaths this year with students and a lot of tragedies. And unfortunately, this last month, we lost two more students from McClure High School. So before we leave tonight, I would just like for us all to have a moment of silence. Here, next year, this much better for our students and our families. Side note, seriously, in my nursing home, every week I have a, one of my staff members come to me, and somebody's going to kill, and their family's, and they all live in North Carolina. So my family, they're each other, love each other. With that said, good night. Go Blues!